Good evening. I'd like to call this February 26th meeting of the Rockingham County School Board to Order. First item on our agenda is to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Fulk. Do I have a second? Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. We'll vote. All those voting to approve the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Wonderful. We have an agenda and welcome everyone to our meeting. If you can, please stand if you are able and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
By the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated and thank you. Next, we'll move into our moment. Well, before we move into our moment of silence, I'd like to point out that Mr. Cross is not able to be with us tonight because he is on a mission trip in Honduras. So keep that in mind during our moment of silence. And will please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the comments from the public. Before we begin that, I would like to say that things have gotten a little, perhaps, straying too far from our rules for our public comment section. So tonight, before we begin public comments, I will read the rules so that everyone's clear on what we expect from our public comments. And then if you do not follow the rules, you will be called out of order. Okay. These rules of procedure are intended to promote the opportunity for orderly, diverse comment during school board meetings, recognizing that the reality are that, ooh, recognizing the reality that there are numerous other agenda items to be addressed during a reasonable time period. Also, there exist a variety of other formal and informal means by which the school board seeks and receives public input during and between meetings. One, a speaker's sign up sheet will be located at the entrance of the meeting room. Speakers must sign up prior to the meeting. Speakers arriving after the commencement of the meeting will be recognized at the discretion of the chairman. Two, each speaker will be recognized in the order listed on the sign up sheet and be limited to three minutes total, whether speaking on behalf of a group or as an individual or whether more than one topic. Additional time may be granted at the discretion of the chairman, but only if necessary. Three, speakers should have their comments reflect the character counts pillars in all comments, being respectful of others and setting good examples for our students. Four, speakers should only speak once about any one item unless they have new material to add. Repetitive comments are discouraged so that others will have the opportunity to present additional or different views during what is a limited amount of time. Four, all comments, I'm sorry, five. All comments shall be directed to the school board as a whole, not individual board members. Debate is prohibited. Six, emotional outbursts, i.e. any form of cheering or shouting from the audience, are not acceptable. Seven, the public comment period will be limited to 30 minutes total per meeting. Eight, the chairman may end any speaker's comments that violate these rules. Nine, once the public comment period has been closed, no further public input will be invited unless clarification is requested by a board member. The response shall address only those specific questions raised by a member. And 10, speakers who have addressed the school board within the last 30 days should instead allow others to speak during the public comment period so that there will be ample opportunity for new or different views on various subjects. These rules are available for pickup and I encourage you, if you want to make public comments, please pick up and review the rules before beginning. Okay, we're going to start our public comment period tonight with Kathy Comer.
Fellow school board members, thank you so much for letting me come and have my three minutes. I'm going to talk about three facts. Okay. The first fact is sex. I've heard a lot of people say that sex can be changed. There is no way sex can be changed. When a male sperm cell and a female sperm cell unite, usually in a woman's uterus, that is when sex is determined. You have the male XY chromosome and the female XX chromosome. When they unite, either XX or XY takes over. Every cell after that union has that sex chromosome. Like Mr. Breeden, he has the XX chromosome. This is lower. You have the X, I'm sorry, he has the XY chromosome. This lower, you have the XX chromosome. Okay. Subsequently, every cell in your bodies and mine and yours have that sex chromosome. So how can you possibly change every cell in your body? Okay. I just wanted to clear that up because the next thing I want to talk about is the word gender. Now, gender, I had no idea what gender is. As you know, my education is in nursing. I received my degree from the Medical College of Virginia. So I'm scientifically trained. So I hadn't heard the word gender. So I have anatomy books in my house. I have my genetic book in my house, which I learned. But I didn't have a biology book. So I called my daughter, who was chosen by the United States Board of Education as one of 10 biology teachers, to go to different regions of the country every summer and spend two weeks reviewing biology books. So I thought she would know if the word gender appeared in any biology book. And it does not. Not in any of them. So the definition, Webster's definition of gender, is the behavioral, cultural, or emotional traits typically associated with one sex. It does not mention the individual's sex. It just mentions the traits associated with that sex. Now, the scientific definition.
That concludes your time.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And I did forget to mention, we have a timer and we have someone keeping time for us and a tone of two tones will sound at 30 seconds left. Next, we have Michael Stempel.
Hello, Board and Assistant Superintendent. Glad to be here. My name is Michael Stempel. I'm from Broadway, Virginia. And as a resident of Rockingham County, I'd like to talk about RCPS and its positive impact on students, parents, and the community. At the previous school board meeting this month, I was brought to tears but not surprised when hearing a moving tribute to a teacher's aide who was more than just an aide to a young lady with intellectual disabilities who recently passed away. You will find stories like this throughout RCPS. I work for Pleasant View Incorporated, a local nonprofit that serves adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities. I quickly became acquainted with the name Chris Dodson and the amazing work he has done and continues to do at the Spotswood High School with the special education class. Volunteer peer mentors are a special part of his program. It's wonderful to see students helping other students succeed. And he cares. You can see it on the faces of the students he serves. We, as working for Pleasant View, we used to have like picnic times where we would, the students who'd be graduating would come to Pleasant View and they would, you know, kind of see what an adult day program would look like. So that was where I got the connection with Chris Dodson. So you'll find stories like this all over RCPS. And then last week, I mean, excuse me, I said last week. I mean, last, the last board meeting with the students and the community and the dialogue that they're, they were trying to establish that they could have a say in their own education and to see them advocating for themselves, I was very impressed, but again, not surprised. And that doesn't happen without good educators, good administrative staff, and a school board that supports that system. So I appreciate all of you and I appreciate the administration and I appreciate RCPS. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sarah Horst.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Hurst. I'm a former employee. That's okay. I answered either. I'm a former employee at Rockingham County Public Schools and I just have a question as you all are moving through the budgeting process, budget season, it's time to make adjustments. Why is it this year that there is at least one elementary school that I know of, and there are probably others, that only have one and a half reading specialists in their building? That's down from two. Now, Rockingham County has always had a great longstanding commitment to always having two, a minimum of two reading specialists in every building and every elementary school. And some have more because they're larger. But this year, there's at least one school that has one and a half. And what's concerning about this and what doesn't make sense to me is that we're post-pandemic, where we've had three years of interrupted learning for children. We know that the reading data is showing we've got lots of students who are not where they should be and could be. And then we also have at some elementary schools where accreditation has been difficult for reading scores. And so what I'm trying to figure out is why we went from two and pulling away specialized support post-pandemic. It just, it doesn't make sense to me. And the thing too, that many people probably don't realize is that the one and a half reading specialists are also tied up in meetings for parts of their day. So they're not even directly working with students every day that they're there. Some of them are doing facilitating training, some of them are attending training. So what we've done is we've reduced the amount of specialized support that our students in some elementary schools have access to, which just doesn't make any sense with post-pandemic accreditation difficulties. So what I'm asking, you know, is first of all, how is this even justified? Where else is this happening? How many other schools only have one and a half as opposed to two? Do parents truly understand what this means to kids, for kids? I'm guessing not because the principals that are at these schools have a really good way of making this okay for their people in their community. So I'm asking that you take a look at the budget and see if you can't figure out how to put that back because that's a really necessary support. As a former reading specialist, I can tell you that they really need that full-time assistant because some, or that full-time teacher because that part-time person can't even be there long enough to establish routine and relationship before they go to another school. So I'm just asking that you keep that in mind as you move forward with the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Deb Hadad. Did I say that one right?
Hello. So I'm here this morning, this afternoon, this evening, whatever time it is, to advocate for my daughter. She is a freshman at Broadway High School. She is an excellent student, a student leader, straight A student, but she also has like some difficulty with anxiety. So in the past, she was allowed to come to school and do her telehealth medicine appointment during the school day. And this was really beneficial for her and something she really needed. Then, one day, she came in and she was told, "I'm sorry, policy's changed. You're not allowed to do it." And so she had like an hour-long panic attack and couldn't go to school for the next three days. And then, since then, we're doing her telehealth from home. And so she, you know, the therapist only opened at nine. And then, so she has to stay home, do her appointment, and she loses like about three hours each week because she has to do it from home. So, you know, it is a medical appointment, I understand. But I think that if RCPS wants to advocate for students' mental and emotional health, that it would be a good policy to allow the telehealth counseling appointments to be done during the school week. That's the end.
Thank you. And Ms. Hadad? I don't have your contact information, so if you can please provide that to the clerk before you leave.
Sure.
So somebody can reach out with you, to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Patrick Fritz.
Good evening, Board. Patrick, I live in Broadway. I've got two students at Broadway High School right now. One of the things, I too would like to talk with Deb because my son also has telehealth that he's done at school in the last week. So I don't know. I mean, I called Jen Nick and she made sure that happened. So I, but anyway, what I did want to say, because y'all know me, we're wrapping up musical season and, and again, I just want to give a huge congratulations to every one of our fine arts students and students that may not even be in fine arts programs. They got up on stage, they got in the pit, they got in the light booth, they got in the sound booth. And just the, and recognize the amount of hours that go into what they've put on over the last two weeks. And, and again, our kids are just absolutely amazing. But even with that, as we're wrapping up, they do have assessment, which is basically like the music SOL that they're going to be preparing for. And we have a Rockingham County Indoor Percussion. It's a combined group from all the different county schools that will be competing in Midlothian this weekend. So again, I just wanted to make the board aware of what our fine arts students are doing throughout our schools because they're doing absolutely phenomenal work. More seriously though, on a more serious note, I did want to briefly talk about the weekday religious education program and how we are vetting those people. We're taking our children and moving them off of school property into a trailer with somebody, right? Maybe you know who they are, but as a parent, I could never get that answer from my kids. And that's deeply concerning. When we have 50% of pastors that self-admittedly watch pornography, 37% that self-report inappropriate sexual behavior with somebody in their church, and 40% of married pastors having extramarital affairs. And when we look at clergy sexual abuse for our children, I'm really concerned about allowing our children to walk off of school property with some unknown to us person who, well, there's a significant amount of sexual deviancy within the church that has not been addressed. And I would like some sort of answer as to how we are vetting those people and how we are securing our children.
Thank you. Kristen Lamb will be our next speaker.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kristen Lamb and I have two children, one who is a second grader at McGaughy'sville and another one who is a two-year-old and obviously is not part of the system yet. I am here to discuss my frustration with the proposed school calendar for next year. I definitely understand the importance of time in the classroom as well as preparation time, planning time, and administrative duties are unfathomable. I am not a teacher. I do not know what they are. However, I can tell you that for my family, this year, after school started, between the first day of school, the last day of school, not counting holidays and regular breaks, there are 11 occasional days off. Next year, there are 12 occasional days off. These days are a struggle for families who have small children. You know, these days off are not days off for the little kids because we have financial obligations we have to meet, which means we have to work. So the kids either come to work with us or they get shuttled into somewhere else at a financial cost that is in addition to what we had planned. This calendar year was made with the assumption that Rockingham County was going to be able to provide additional resources. We were signed up for it for the Parks and Rec. Obviously, it was a surprise to everyone. That was not something that anyone could have anticipated, including myself. And we were able to scramble and my second grader is able to take the bus to Boys and Girls Club, which is a fantastic option. The graciousness of their hearts to allow them, so we are thankful. But this calendar is done with the knowledge that there is no additional support. And childcare is an issue. In Rockingham County, childcare is a crisis. There are not enough spots and there's just not enough availability. And all I'm asking is for you to go back and look to see if you can make it make sense. Last week is a perfect example. There was a government holiday. Government employees were off, kids were in school, but on Friday, kids were out. It didn't make sense. I know you can't make a schedule that fits my perfect needs. I get it. But just make it make more sense so that there's a more cohesive schedule so it is easier on families. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then I think Amber Hamm and Jason Longcor. I believe you guys are. You're speaking on behalf of a group.
Good evening. Jason and I are here to, on behalf of CSAC and as CSAC Chair, to talk about budget recommendations. The CSAC meets regularly to talk about successes, unmet needs, and services that can be improved to meet the needs of special education students who attend Rockingham County Public Schools. We have open communication with parents, community members, and RPS staff. Through that communication, we increase our understanding and the barriers of students with disabilities to access enough staff, equipment, and services. So speaking on behalf of staffing, for some special education students, they need extra support in the classroom. This support usually comes from teachers and paraprofessionals in the classroom or staff that have the time to work with the students outside the classroom. If there's not enough staff, this leads to staff burnout and turnover of employees in the special education field as teachers are expected to do more than they can physically do in a day. And it can sometimes lead to an IEP not being followed, which can lead to legal issues. This also affects the general education teachers because they are not getting the support they need as they have the responsibility to serve all students in their class. In return, either special education students fail to get further behind or the other students' education is affected and they might not meet their benchmarks. You will see in the budget recommendations that the need for increased staff, from the perspective of CSAC, this is a modest request from the Special Education Department. And we do not feel that this will meet the needs of the special education students attending Rockingham County Public Schools. If there's not enough staff to meet their needs, it will not only affect the special education students, but also the other classes, students in the classroom. Equipment and specialized services. Some special education students have lifelong disabilities that impair their ability to ever function within normal range of their developmental age. It is not because of the lack of effort, it is because of their disability. However, through the proper equipment and services provided through the school, they have a chance to increase their skills and possibly compensate for the disability. However, the lack of funding for these services and equipment limits them to reaching their full potential. For some of these students, it is the basic that most of us take for granted, the ability to hear, to talk, to walk, to have the opportunity to play outside free of tripping hazards or the spaces that are wheelchair accessible. These several learning opportunities for the physical outlets and the social opportunities are limited because the schools do not have the equipment needed. Sometimes they have specialized help and need more time, they need specialized help and need more time with speech pathologists, reading specialists, physical therapists, and other specialized services. Attending summer school so that they do not lose the skills that they have struggled to gain all year long.
Hold on just a second. Okay, reset the clock, please, and we'll start Mr. Longcor's time. Okay.
These students deserve the same opportunity to reach their full potential. However, most of our schools are lacking these resources to provide these opportunities for their students. Below are the budget-aligned items, which I will give you in a copy, that we would like you to consider incorporating into your budget if you have not already. This is only the start of what is needed, but we need to start somewhere. Conclusion. The role of education has many facets, but it should strive to allow students to reach their full potential, whether it is to prepare them for the, to further their studies, to attend college, or a student who dreams is to communicate their needs to their caregivers or to be able to physically care for themselves. We all have struggles. However, some of our struggles only last a season of our lives. However, for students with disabilities, they must learn to manage these lifetime disabilities and RCPS has a role that is imperative. Asking the schools and teachers to do that without having the proper funding is setting them up for failure. In return, you are diminishing the abilities of special education students reaching their potential. CSAC would ask that you really look at the budget to free up the funding resources to meet the needs of our special education students. Not only what has already been asked by the current budget recommendations, but to incorporate additional requests for funding. Are there line items that can be reduced or delayed so that current special education students can have the opportunity to experience what most of us take for granted? And so some of those budget recommendations I will give to you, but just to highlight some of them, therapeutic equipment and accessibility for special needs students to increase in quality. Elementary and secondary summer schools for Level 1 and Level 2 students, not just the focus on academics, but also social skills. More pay for paraprofessional assistants and subs working with special needs students. Extra stipends to work with special needs students, like personal hygiene stipends when a child needs to be cared for with bathroom hygiene. Mantaining training or something equivalent for staff, all staff, not just some, all staff working with students which could potentially need it. And then summer school opportunities are funded to continue services during the summer. These are just some of the things that CSAC would like to highlight for you to consider as you're going through the budget this year.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our public comments, I believe. It was an interesting sheet tonight. Let's, as far as people removed and then added and, so I didn't miss anybody, correct? Okay. We'll now move along to highlights by board members and we're going to start with Mr. Fulk.
My wife and I took our granddaughter to see the matinee of Cinderella at Broadway High School yesterday. And our daughters were always involved in musicals and drama and sporting events and all sorts of things. And so we, we had a good idea of how things go and what goes into it, but I was just, it was such a neat reminder to go see it again because you hear so often said that sports are what help children learn how to be team members and productive and be part of an effort. High school musical is the whole community, the whole society. It's the actors, the musicians, the people doing the sets. It involves everybody and it's such an important thing. And thank you, Mr. Fritz, for your remarks about the fine arts in our schools. We have really, in Rockingham County, tried to promote the performing arts and the visual arts. tried to promote the performing arts and the visual arts. And I think we've got a good program in Rockingham. And I just, I just wanted to highlight that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Mr. Breeden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As some of you know who attend the meetings regularly, I have been highlighting some of the people that over my nearly twenty-four years of service, as I wind this down, have had a, an, an influence on me and have been helpful to me. And I'd like to continue that tonight with some board members that I've served with. And for those who know us well, I'll save Mr. Falk for later because that'll take up too much time. But I, I wanted to just give a shout out to Dr. Carol Grove, to Lena Osborne, to John Packard, to Bob May, who have, who have been not only colleagues, but good friends. I remember taking a walk with Dr. Grove at the V SBA conference just shortly after I was elected and, and really getting a perspective from her on, on what it takes to be a board member and, and her professional attitude towards that. I'll, I, I have not forgotten. But I also wanted to mention someone that I've gotten to know, have known for years in a professional capacity, but gotten to know better as a board member, and that's Dr. McQuilkin. Dr. McQuilkin shows me weekly what grace and dignity should look like and has become an invaluable friend to me, and I, I appreciate that. And while I'm on that, I was not able to attend the last meeting, but I was made aware that some comments were made to Dr. McQuilkin about Dr. McQuilkin that were, at best, nasty and at worst threatening. There were those who took it both ways. And what's even harder for me to imagine is I'm told there was some applause when that speaker finished. And it's okay to disagree, but all of us in our lifetime, at one time or another, I suspect, have had to step back and evaluate where we're going, who we are, what, how we want to be known. I believe now is such a time for our community. And that goes for irregardless of which political persuasion you have. I think that we need to, we need to decide, how do we, how do we want to be seen in Rockingham County? And for God's sakes, what do we want our kids to hear us say when we're here? Now, I will say that there was what I consider to be a disingenuous apology sent to all of the board, but nothing personal to Dr. McQuilkin. And where I come from, that's just unacceptable. And I'm going to date myself a little bit because I was listening to Jim Croce. Anybody remember Jim Croce? Time in a Bottle, right? A poem that he wrote, I think, is, is very appropriate for what I'm trying to say, and it's titled, "Which Way Are You Going?" And it says, "Which way are you going? Which side will you be on? Will you stand and watch while all the seeds of hate are sown? Will you stand with those who say, 'Let his will be done' with one hand on the Bible and one hand on the gun? Which way are you looking? Is it hard to see? Do you say what's wrong for him is not wrong for me? You walk the streets righteousness, but you refuse to understand. You say you love the baby, then you crucify the man. Every day, things are changing. Words once honored turn to lies. People wondering, can you blame them? It's too far to run and too late to hide. Now you turn your back on all the things that you used to preach. Now it's let him live in freedom, if he lives like me. Well, your light has changed. Confusion reigns. What have you become? All your olive branches turn to spears when your flowers turn to guns. All your olive branches turn to spears when your flowers turn to guns. May we all do better.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Dr. McQuilkin?
Thank you, Ms. Law. And, thank you, Dan. Thank you, Mr. Breeden, for the kind comments, for the sentiments. Thank you. I would like to begin by highlighting everyone who has participated in the survey for the superintendent's search. Here before us this evening, a little later in the agenda, you'll be hearing from Dr. Kevin Castner and Dr. Wayne Harris about the results of the search. And so I'm saying, well, actually, we haven't finished the results of the search. We're just finding a, a leadership profile to move forward, but it was because you all participated. So I would like to thank everyone who participated in the survey, who sent emails, who spoke to the consultants, and those who participated in the comments and the forums at, at the high schools. Thank you very much. It takes all of us to work together. My second one, I'll just piggyback on, on Mr. Falk and say, uh, the musicals were wonderful. The art shows that were available during the musicals were great. And we just thank everyone. And we, I echo Mr. Falk. We have a wonderful fine arts program and we want to continue and move forward with it.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Dr. Oliver, would you like to go next?
Um, so I'm here in place of Dr. Schikele this evening. He had another engagement. He couldn't be here. So we've also talked, already talked about the, the musicals. The thing that I am very thankful for, obviously, for the, all the students and staff who were working with those musicals. I was thankful that the weather was good for them, right? So unlike many sports teams, right? You have a season that may last two or three months at a time. For our musicals, they last four days typically, right? So if you have sickness or if you have bad weather, that can really be a problem for those musicals. So the unseasonably warm weather was well timed. So I'm just happy for them that, that that was able to, to take place. The other thing I would just congratulate, both our, some of our sports teams that are going to be moving on to state, regional and state competitions, but also our individual athletes who are doing that. So sometimes, again, teams will get a lot of recognition, but we have some individual, the individuals who will be participating in various competitions as well over the next several weeks. So we want to wish all of them good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Oliver. I'd just like to echo a little bit of what my colleagues have said. It, it's been a fun week. It's been busy, been a lot going on. For me, it was National FFA Week. And board members, you have an invitation. It, and it does, the weather has been great. It feels like April, and April will be here before you know it. But we have an invitation to the Rockingham FFA Heritage Local Dinner to support Rockingham County, Rockingham County Public School students in FFA events moving forward. So take a look at that. But FFA Week brought trips to jump parks and breakfasts. And I'd like to thank East Rock for inviting us and had some wonderful bacon and sausage at East Rock last week. And then, of course, we had musicals. And if you didn't get to a musical, I highly, highly, highly recommend hitting a middle school musical. And then part of what I super love about musical is you can see them at middle school and then you come back next year and you see them maybe again at mu, at middle school. And then you come back next, the next year, and then you see them at high school. And you can watch them grow. And that's how, that happens with sports and lots of things in our school system. It's so awesome to watch these kids grow and, and improve their skills and just become amazing young adults. And actually, there were two young ladies in two different musicals that I've known since they were little, and they were leads this year. So it was so exciting to see that. And that, I firmly believe that whether it's sports or musical or FFA or Debate Club, whatever it takes to get the kid excited in coming to school, I am a huge supporter of that. Kids need, they need something to, to be afraid that they're going to lose. They need something to be passionate about. And any, any of our events that, that do that, I am super proud of and super happy to support. And I just want to thank every, everyone who helps support the kids in that, in those endeavors as well. And, but what I really like about musical, at the end of the day, they're all winners. So, uh, it's, sports are fun and FFA, well, it does some stuff. You, you, FFA is not a spectator sport, if you will. But musical, you get to see the kids grow and they're all winners at the end. So I, I have to start, uh, working on my upper body strength because all the clapping I do during musical season wears my arms out. So please, if you get a chance, uh, get out there and see some kids participating in school events. It will make your day. And I think that pretty much concludes my rah rah session on Rockingham County Public Schools. Thank you to everyone who helps support our kids. We'll now move along to the minutes. Board members, you have received the minutes. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
A move that we accept the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Are there any additions or corrections or discussions about the minutes? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda are field trips. Dr. Oliver?
So we have six field trips up for your approval. One is, the first one is from Montevideo Middle School. The FCC LA group will be going to Virginia Beach on April thirteenth through sixteenth. That's eight students. Uh, we also have from Broadway High School, the DECA students will be going to Orlando, Florida. There's twenty of them going from April twenty-first to the twenty-sixth. Massent Technical Center, the Diesel Technology Class has two students going to Exton, Pennsylvania on April twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. From Wilbur, Pence, uh, we have twelve students going to the Virginia Beach Convention Center on April thirteenth through sixteenth for FCC LA. From TA to Rashby High School, the Agriculture Department has twenty-four students that will be going to Smith Island in Maryland on April twenty-first to the twenty-third. And from East Rockingham High School, we have thirty students from a science class going to Point Isabel Island and Tangier Island on March twenty-first through the twenty-third. I recommend all of those field trips for your approval.
Thank you, Dr. Oliver. Those sound like some really great educational trips. Do I hear, do I have a motion?
I move to accept Dr. Oliver's recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there any discussion regarding field trips? Hearing none, we'll vote to approve the field trips as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The field trips are approved. Next item on the agenda is a bid recommendation. And Mr. Steve Reed?
Chair, Lord, Dr. Oliver, members of the board. The bid for installation of an ADA-compliant access ramp at the front entry at J. Frank Hilliard Middle School was properly specified and advertised. Five firms were sent bid packages and we had two respond with sealed bids as follows. Our recommendation is to award the contract to the low bidder, Harrisonburg Construction, in the amount of one hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred dollars.
I recommend that we award the contract for the new ADA compliant access ramp at the front entrance to J. Frank Hilliard Middle School to the low bidder as presented by Steve Reed, Director of Maintenance.
Thank you, Dr. Oliver. Do I hear a board member motion?
I move that we follow the Assistant Superintendent's recommendation regarding the bid, the ramp at Hilliard, at Hilliard Middle School.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there any discussion? Is there currently a ramp there?
Not at the, not at the main entrance now.
Not at the front door, right? That's what I was thinking. Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote on the recommendation to, um, award the bid for the new ADA-compliant access ramp at J. Frank Hilliard. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. That concludes our action items portion of the agenda. We'll now move on to our information item. Uh, and we'll begin with the superintendent's search community engagement update.
Good evening, board members. We're happy to be back before you. I want to congratulate you that as we've undergone the community engagement process and the fact that you are well aware that that's how we do our work in doing a superintendent's search, you allowed us to be guests in your community and to hear from members throughout your community. And we are reporting on what we heard. The trust that you have for letting us to come in, to share information to you this evening, that will be public record on the completion of our report. You as board members, for the very first time, are looking at this. No one's seen this before. We have done our very best to put the information we heard. We're not putting in anything in our judgment. We're trying to be as accurate as we can to reflect your community, to make sure we have a data-driven leadership profile. And we're going to go through this process. And before I, I get into it, I, I really would like to thank Caitlin Gilkinson. She has been so invaluable. This has probably been the best organized search that we've gone through and all the opportunities that we've had to be very efficient. Her effort even in copying all these documents in front of you, it's just very much appreciated. And she's always done it with a smile. And it's taken some time. And she's got a lot of other things going on in her day, too. So Caitlin, thank you very much. I'd like to, the, oops. So the first slide here, what we're talking about, the objectives of the search. You can see that the whole search process and what we're trying to do is to try to get information that's going to help us figure out more about your community and hear about strengths and weaknesses. And frankly, in our situation, we've done this before for you. So in two seventeen, we certainly had an understanding of your community, and the community's different. The world's changed, a lot of other things going on. And I, I think that while there are so many similarities that continue to be part of your community, there's also certain uniquenesses that are going to come out when we present this report. And truth is, as regard to participation, we have far more participation this time we've had in the past. We, we, uh, you know, when we did the survey last time, we had seven hundred and fifty-three people. This time, we're at nineteen hundred. We met with about two hundred and twenty people. This time, we met with over three hundred. So the interest was there. The responses, again, the process works. So we know as we go through that, when you look at the types we did the community engagement, we engaged the same groups of people that we've had in the past. We talk about two hundred and sixty-five people that we met with in over forty-two meeting sessions, in forums, and the fact that I've received more emails than I've seen in a long time, over forty-five emails. And those, those weren't short emails. There were people that looked at the survey and we've offered the opportunity for them to respond to it, to go deeper than they can on just checking something off. So I'd like to just tell the board members what you have in front of you. What you have in front of you is a report, and the report itself, we would recommend you make public record. This report has some important things. And I, I say this for the people listening and for the audience. We attempted to very faithfully try to record the information that we heard during the types of, when we met with the groups. It's reflected in the last portion of the report. It's probably about ten or twelve pages. We do not take shorthand, so it can't... We, uh, do not take shorthand, so it can't tell you that it's perfect. And whenever we heard something more than once, we tried to make sure we recorded it. Sometimes we had some information that was more outlying information, and it didn't reach that same threshold. So in this report, uh, well, you're going to see that we have organized what's in the appendices into different categories that it represented as we've done in the past. And you'll see how we've tried to pull out things. And when we pull things out and we put them into the categories, they're because we heard things multiple times. And so even, uh, as we appreciated the information from all of the emails, we found that the emails to be very consistent with what we heard in the public. So you have this information. In addition, you have surveys, not only for the, uh, 1,900 people, but we chose also to disaggregate what our students said. And we had over 455 students, which we actually think that this might be an interesting assignment for staff to come talk to the kids and see what, some of the things they said. And there's a couple places where what the students have written is a little different than what the adults have said. You might want to look into that, and I'm going to highlight that because it, it's a teachable moment and maybe more that we can learn, uh, how to better serve our students when we do that. You also have, uh, a copy in front of you of the actual PowerPoint. And this is what I intend to go into right now. Now, this PowerPoint is in a different format that you've seen before. The person that works on it came up with the fact that we can actually show this information instead of just highlighting top areas, we can show the whole context of each question. And when we're starting out, when you're looking at the PowerPoint, and you can look at it here, and again, some people, if they have trouble reading that, again, it's going to end up being on your website. Everybody lived in Rockingham, I mean, we're talking about over 90%. You can see that in regard to staff, only 33% of the report is staff. I find that significant because the majority of the report, two-thirds, are all for people that have children in the schools, or they're members of your community. If anyone would suggest this is all of a sudden staff-weighted, no, it's not. It's weighted by the members of your community. The same so when we did the meetings with all our different groups. That too had a balance of being internal and external. And then each group obviously had certain areas that they might want to go into, but we did get pretty much of a balance in that. So when you look at this and you can see that participation, this is what you wanted. You wanted to have the outreach, the forums could be attended by anybody, and people did take advantage of that. Now, when we actually get into the report itself, and you start looking at getting into what are the three highest areas, you also can see there are other areas on here that people had some thoughts about. But when you talk about dealing with, uh, 1,900 people, and so if all of a sudden anything it reaches a threshold of almost 1,000 people saying, "This is important", then you're, you're getting some trend data. Uh, one of the things I found out, uh, when we did this report, we ran it first when there were 500 people that put the data in for this report. When we now go up to about 2,000, the percentages didn't change but 1% or 2%. So the trend data, when you end up getting at least 500, stays relatively the same. So if we went under 5,000, we're still going to have the same balance here. And, and I just, I'm, I'm not a mathematician, but I am telling you, it, it gives us confidence here. So when you look at this and you notice here, we're still excellent teachers and staff. Now, I did take the time to look at your previous report. So I do see a consistency in, in a lot of the top areas here. Supportive community, educational options and programs. When you see this information up here and you see the balance of it, you'll see how this is going to match the quanti, the qualitative data when we hear what people's comments were. So they'll, they'll talk about the same different categories. So you stand out and you look at this and, and you can see that, um, there's a pattern. And the pattern on this is relatively the same. I would tell you, though, it was interesting, that some of our students had a little different reaction. I was a little disappointed, and I don't know the answer to this, that while we had 52% of the people that took the survey thought about excellent teachers, the students had that down at 38%. I haven't seen that before. I don't know what that means, but that's the type of conversation I think you'd want to have when you talk to some of your students. Don't know the answer on that because everybody has their freedom of choice to put what they put in. You're going to also notice that students were a little bit higher on technology. If the general public had 20%, the students had 26%. But I, I like this other item, and I think it is indicative of your programming, that if the general public put programming down as the strength of 21%, the students put 33%. So the students recognize that they do have different choices. Now, again, if you look and compare, you can go in this in greater detail. And I think there's just something to be said here. We go to this next slide. When you're getting into talking about, um, concerns, I found it interesting that last time, when we talked about concerns, we were talking about funding. We didn't hear concerns about funding. What we did here, and we're going to elaborate on it, is a lot of support that we've had from your supervisors that are supporting public education here. And people have been complimentary of that. So I would think whatever, and again, times are different, but the fact is that, uh, you have that type of support. I thought that was pretty, pretty significant. But here's something that we need to learn from. I haven't had this come out before, but one of the types of areas that are most important issues have to deal with student mental health. There's a story here. The general population, in a guard to a concern, had 51% for student mental health. So folks, I'm not just talking to you about superintendent search. I'm talking to you about our former superintendents hat. But the students had 69% for students' mental health. Now, we know coming out of COVID, there's a fragileness that we have, but not just with students. We also have it with some of our staff. Paying attention to this issue and your budget or other things is something that you might glean from this report. The other area that, that we haven't seen as much was the issue on, uh, student climate and culture. We had a pretty significant number before, but that's higher than it was before. Uh, the third category was personnel. We think the personnel issue might had to do with the fact that there's been a tough time finding drivers, substitute teachers, and, and some of the areas that we're just not having staffing, and we're going to go into that a little bit more. So the one thing, this is different than the last time we were here. And I, I think there's some information that you might use to follow up on in regard to that. The rest of the information we're getting into, that, that does have a lot of similarities, is getting back into, now, my problem here is when I look up, I cannot read it myself, but you can see where communication skills are out there. When you look at the, uh, communication skills that you have in this report, they are most significant. And, uh, 70% people are looking for excellent communication. Now, this is one that the students, they're at 72%. So there's great agreement there. Now, interpersonal skills show up at 31%, but for the students, it was only 17%. I don't know what that means exactly, but organizational skills, the general report had 18, but students had 31%. So they know that being organized, thoughtful, part of strategic planning. Community engagement as being important, both were 42%. So the idea of someone being engaged in your community. So you're going to look at that trend data, too, when you compare that. So we go to the next slide, and now we're talking about some of the responses. And I would say this comparison between this survey and your last survey is not completely apples to apples. The staff chose to put in a few different categories, and one of the categories that I do like, while you had commitment to community, and it was very high last time, in this place, we put in the category commitment to students. That shows up at over 2, 67%. The students have it at 69%. So the whole issue of what this is all about, and what your new leader needs to continue, is this commitment to students. A good judgment was very similar. Approachable was very similar, 38%, 41%. A lot of that's pretty consistent that you're looking for. This slide is pretty busy, and let me translate it for you. In this slide, what we're looking for is what people are looking that could be, um, something that is preferred or something they think is very, very important. When you combine it, the things we're looking for are the highest categories. And we look at the highest categories in doing this. Not surprisingly, we're looking for strategic planning, expertise in strategic planning. The other category that's the highest is instruction. You're looking for someone that, and classroom teacher was right up there around 90%. And then you had strategic planning. And so it, it was also interesting that there was a questionnaire that talked about someone with experience in a multicultural community. The students put that higher than the general population by 5% or 6%. So your community, as it becomes more diverse, it's being recognized. And you're seeing that, that that is happening not only here, but a lot of other places. So as you're having your growth, you know that your growth is, is not, uh, occurring necessarily with exactly the same group that we might have had in your student population in 2017. You're more aware of that trend data than I would be. So when you look at that, um, I thought that category, if you look at it closely, you'll be able to look at it when you look at the information. At this point, what I'd like to do in getting into the qualitative information is Dr. Harris would like to go into how we generated the comments that we had based upon the appendices of the information we received from all the different meetings that we had. Wayne?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Oliver, it's good to be back before you, and there's good news. As you are aware, we spent two days on the seventh and the ninth of February, providing an opportunity for anyone who wanted to come and share with us responses to three questions. The information that Dr. Cashner just shared with you through the survey that could be completed online included essentially the same three questions that we posed to everyone we met with in those two days. Uh, we each had 11 different meetings each day, beginning at nine o'clock, wrapping up with a forum. We met the forum at each of the four high schools. We had a group of students come at each of those four forums. Uh, I will tell you, I'm impressed. We're always impressed because the students share honestly with us, and they share from their own relevant experience at the moment. What I will be sharing with you is qualitative data that we collected from what people shared with us. We read back to each person and/or group what they said to us because we wanted to capture what they said to us that then becomes a part of the report that helps us then draft the leadership profile. We asked three basic questions. The first question, what are the strengths of Rockingham County Public Schools? The second question, what are the challenges you currently face? And what are the challenges your next superintendent will face? And third, the essence of what we really want to know, what are the qualities, characteristics, experience, knowledge, and skills the next superintendent will need to possess and be able to demonstrate in order to be successful? And we walked through those questions. We asked for clarification where we needed, and then we read back to each group what they said to us, and that's captured in the report. As I go through their responses for strengths and also for their concerns and issues, I refer you in the report to pages five, six, seven, eight, and nine for the specific comments that we then captured, highlight in these three slides. So you have the complete information that we recorded in each session listed on those pages. And then in the appendices, you have all of the comments that we recorded in each of the 42 meetings over those two days. In terms of strengths, excellent quality teachers, principals, and staff. You saw that in the quali, in the quantitative data. Supportive community, you saw that in the other report. Support from supervisors, well-funded. These are the kinds of things we heard repeatedly, not just once, twice, three times, but throughout the two days of listening to what people had to say. It's a great community, sense of community here. We feel it's, it's a community where we, we support what's going on. Higher education support, references to the higher education, uh, to the colleges and universities that are here, and strong partnerships throughout the community. Great diverse group of students. Educational options and programs, again, you heard the students highlighted that, but that was also highlighted in the quantitative data. Strong technology, CTE, AG, and arts program. You heard that tonight. You've heard it from the board level. You heard it from the audience. Conservative community with strong Christian values. Forward-thinking and innovative instructional practices, and excellent SRO support. It, it pleases us that we recognize the importance of tooting our own horn. We, we're not bragging. We're simply saying, "This is who we are. This is what makes us smile." Because what we know is if you fail to toot your own horn, it doesn't get tooted. And so we were pleased to hear these things about what a great place it is and what's happening for students. When it comes to concerns, that was the second question that we asked. So we listed the more prominent things that we heard repeatedly, over and over again, that would be challenges, concerns, or issues. Crowding because of growth, that there's, there's growth in certain parts of the county, and that it's causing overcrowding. We heard students speak to that. Addressing the increasing student diversity and meeting the needs of students, specifically meeting the needs of this increasing, uh, EL population that you have, but also we heard that we're really not meeting the needs of special education students and other students who are having difficulty in the regular school environment. We're not talking about discipline problems in this case. We're just saying that all students don't fit, and so we are not meeting the needs of many of our students. Student mental health issues, you've heard that repeatedly, but it's more than mental health. It's social, emotional issues as well. Attracting and retaining staff for a number of reasons. Competitive salaries is one of them, and improving the diversity- Competitive salaries is one of them, and improving the diversity of our staff. We heard that from students as well. There are three comments here that we've captured because we heard multiple concerns and issues expressed about contentiousness on the school board that's causing a backlash among and between board members. Personal and political agendas of board members that interferes with being able to focus on what's best for students. Concerns expressed about the potential turnover and change of the board and what will the board makeup look like? And what impact will that have on prospective candidates who look to say the board that hires me may not be the board that I end up working for? But we we heard that repeatedly. And then last, there's a public perception that the board's public demeanor doesn't reflect a true focus on what's best for students. When it came to the third question, what are the qualities, characteristics, experiences, knowledge that the next superintendent will need to possess and demonstrate? We use that information, not only from what we heard, but from from the survey, to draft for you a leadership profile. And we found that when we looked at all of those prominent responses that we heard, what do you want us to look for? It fit into four different categories. And those categories are a visionary instructional leader, an effective communicator, a collaborative manager, and personal qualities. And so the overview gives you the broad definition of what it is this community wants us to look for in candidates from which you will choose your next superintendent. I remind you and the public, Kevin and I don't make any decisions. We make recommendations. So our recommendation to you is this draft leadership profile. And the essence of the profile says, the Rockingham County Board seeks an outstanding instructional leader who has successfully demonstrated a record of excellence. You're seeking an outstanding visionary and instructional leader who can collegally, meaning work with others, lead a forward-looking school system with a history of success, will have a positive record of improved student academic achievement, and experience working in a similar type community. We heard, understand who we are, support who we are. And finally, will be student-focused, visible throughout the schools and the community, and who can demonstrate a combination of the following qualities. And folks, I'm not going to read all of these to you. I'm going to put them up here. And there are four descriptors for what is meant by visionary instructional leader. Let me highlight. Have a clear and understandable vision. Will implement initiatives that promote the success and well-being of each and every student. Committed to work with the staff and the community in an open way. Who will meet the needs of a broad spectrum of students, including providing behavioral and academic support to struggling students, as well as to advocate for advanced classes to challenge students and support expanded career and technical. We heard not just career, career, not just college, career readiness, ready to go to work. And finally, a strong instructional background and experience guiding technology initiatives and programs which provide multiple opportunities for all students. That's the one piece of this four-pronged leadership profile. Effective communicator, bottom line, that they're going to listen, be active listener, they're going to be transparent, they're going to build trust and support, they're going to be visible and approachable, who will be committed to work with all segments, meaning everything from the school board to the board of supervisors, parents, students, and the community. Someone who is a collaborator, who will bring all segments of a diverse community together. And finally, confidence. Another way to say that is carriage. To be a decision-maker who will listen to different points of view before making a final decision. Third category. Leader with strategic planning. We saw that in the other, in the survey data. Someone who can make the best use of all available resources to address the growth of an increasing diverse community. An effective manager who will utilize operational expertise to assure the system's fiscal and human resources are assigned in the best way. Collaborator, someone who will be a collaborative leader who can move the district forward and navigate change by building and sustaining positive relationships, again, with board of supervisors, the school board, et cetera. And finally, a leader who can create and implement a plan which includes the necessary fiscal and human resources designed to increase staff diversity at all levels and establish programs and facilities that benefit all students. Do you notice this continuing theme of what's best for students? We saw that in all the data. It's about what's best for students and also what's supportive of staff. And finally, personal qualities. Inclusive with unquestionable integrity, who is known for building a culture of respect. And in this day and age, that's critical. Transparent, affirming leader who is politically astute with the courage to address issues necessary, there's that phrase again, for the benefit of students. Energetic, genuine, compassionate, who will advocate and support teachers and staff, collaborate with the board, staff, parents, community to benefit students. Student-focused leader who is ethical, dedicated, thick-skinned. We heard that from the kids. And who is visible in the extended community. These are the four categories. Again, the specific comments that led to these statements in each category are on those pages in the total report, so you can see how we came up with this. This is the draft profile that we would ask you to approve in order that we can post it with the vacancy announcement. I remind you that the application process is open until the thirtieth of March, so we really have thirty-one more days, starting tomorrow, for applicants to apply. This is simply what the the calendar looks like, if you will. We're giving you this report tonight. That completes the specifications part once you approve the leadership profile. Application process continues through the end of March. During that time, as applicants are coming in, we will be screening those applicants, making decisions on which group of applicants are meeting and matching the profile that are good match and fit. Kevin and I will be then contacting some of those folks, screening, vetting, trying to make decisions who's going to rise to the top, with a goal of coming back to you sometimes in by the middle of April, where we would present the four to six top candidates from the total pool who match the profile, fit, match and fit. We would present those candidates to you in closed session. Obviously, you'll get to see the entire list, and we would be recommending, we will be presenting, not promoting the candidates. We'll present to you based on our assessment of who is a good fit and match. You will make a decision who you interview. You will make a decision from what we present to you and the list, who you bring in to interview, who becomes the top two candidates. You then decide from those top two, who is your selection, work out the contract. And the goal is that you would have made those decisions before we get too far to the end of May with the person reporting by July one.
I'd like to make an additional comment. Candidates are going to be watching your board meeting.
They already have. As you take this report and you look at it, and you talk about moving forward as a board in which you're looking to find someone to be your next leader, it can't happen on a split vote. And the type of relationship that you'll have is a two-way street between your candidate and your school board. And as you're talking among yourselves how you best want to move forward, there are times when a school board can listen to a report like this and make comments as they're going into this process that are going to say, this is what we want to try to do. And one of the things that I've seen more often than not, in fact, almost every time, a superintendent search process does bring a school board together. And I'm hoping that you can take advantage of that here, too. I know there might be a new board, but the bottom line, there's one thing that's consistent. I don't care what board it is, it's got to get back to the kids. And they're too precious not to get into the type of thing that will lead to that type of best decisions. Your school system has a good reputation. You've earned it. And I suspect you're going to continue to earn it. So I don't want to awfulize anything. I do want to state the reality as you're going through some of the transitions, which are happening not just here. You can look across Virginia, across the country. But I I'm an optimist here. I think everything's going to trump when you get into doing what you need to do for the best interest of students. So I hope that you can take advantage of how you might feel as a board and in the public way to decide as you're going to go through this process, how you're trying to come together. And and we have had issues in the past where boards haven't always worked as well as they might like, but then they get to the point of saying, now, listen, this is what we're trying to do because it's in the best interest of kids, that we try to attract the strongest possible candidate pool. And I I'm saying that in a very optimistic way. And I still go back to John Dewey, way back, maybe eighteen ninety, with the best and brightest parent might want for their child, so must we want for all of our children. All of our children. You come back to that, and I think you're on pretty good grounds. So I want to thank you for the opportunity of allowing us to present this report. I would encourage you, and I know you've already told me you intend to make this public record on your website. And I suspect if some people think that if we didn't get something right, then they need to say that, but we did our very best. And the next time will be before you is when we will be presenting candidates, which I suspect will probably be towards the beginning of the second week in April. Not knowing where your spring break is, so we'll see how that will work out. Do board members have any questions for Dr. Harris and myself?
Yes, thank you very much for your report. And I think our spring break, are there students in the room? I think our spring break's like in two weeks. So we're, yeah, right? Because we all need it, right? So April, we are, we're ready to work.
Thank you. We'll see you in April.
We thank you very much, very much.
Just as a matter of clarification, Madam Chair, do we need to approve the the profile tonight?
It doesn't need to be approved tonight, but as as soon as possible in order that we can post it. I had a phone call today from a prospective candidate, and the first question was, when will I see the profile? I don't see it with the announcement. And I explained, we were sending tonight, and probably within the next several days it would be available, so.
Do we want to vote on the business board? If we want to just have conversations with the chairman of the committee, the search committee, and make any changes?
I my thought would be, and in practice with previous searches, would be that the the community would hear that we had approved the the profile as it was presented, and I would be prepared, I understand, I realize we're in information items. But if it would please the chair, I would move that we accept the draft profile that's been presented tonight.
Okay, I have a motion that's been made to accept the draft profile. Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Thank you, Dr. McWhelkin. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of accepting the profile as presented tonight, please say aye. Aye, all opposed, same son.
Thank you. We'll get it posted.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good night. Okay, oh, moving on, we will move on to the Rockingham County Public Schools Community Dialogue Update. Dr. Catherine Barnes is to present.
Good evening, and so good to see you all again. When we were last here, it was in October, and we had, and maybe just sort of back up a minute, we had been, over the course of a year, have been exploring some questions around how best to create a safe and caring environment for all Rockingham County Public School students in ways that are consistent with the law, while also considering the diverse values and perspectives of Rockingham community. So during this time, we have had a number of stages, as you know. And when we were last here is in October twenty-two, when we had had the culmination of our core dialogue group process, and we were here to present you with the outcomes of that discussion, and had many members of the core dialogue group present and participating. And tonight, I'm really pleased to say that we have many people who are here tonight who have been a part of the stage that we've done since then, which is a series of large group thematic dialogues. And that is what we are going to be presenting on tonight, updating you and also sharing a report of the outcome of those discussions with you, which is in your board packet and will be posted now on the Rockingham County Public Schools Community Dialogue Initiative website. We are also going to be launching the Public Community Dialogue, which will be happening on March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, and we'll be doing both of those this evening. But first, wanting to just really give so much acknowledgement and appreciation to all of the people who've been participating in this. It was quite amazing, there are a number of us who were back here and listening to the outcomes of the superintendent's search engagement process and feeling like, yes, 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 the things that we have been discovering through this community dialogue are also echoed there. And so I hope that some of the things that we will be talking about tonight will really kind of round out and give some of that kind of qualitative depth of ideas that community is coming up with. These also are complementary to the scoreplor presentation last time of the Rockingham County High Schoolers, the eleventh graders, and their wonderful insights. And their ideas have also been putting into this process, and they will also be present at the Community Dialogue on March twenty-third. So we're really in this place of it all coming together now. So the report that you have really is seeking to summarize and weaving together the ideas that have been a part of the process. And you can see some photos that share with you sort of some of the quality of what the process looked like. And you can imagine, there were some eighty-plus people who've participated with many, many different views and perspectives and life's experiences. But as you can see, even from, and this is, this is indicative, the faces there, you can see people are really engaging with each other. And some of the things that people really highlighted in their feedbacks later on is how much they appreciated this opportunity, both to recognize what we have in common while also respecting the differences, that creating a space and positive place to consider each other's perspectives, that we have people from all different backgrounds, political ideologies and experiences, coming together to share their thoughts in a respectful manner, and really about improving the well-being of our children. Once again, what is there for the students? And so this report is really trying to kind of come up And so this report is really trying to kind of come up with some of the ideas, summarizing them. Must say that all the participants who were there do not necessarily agree with all the points of view that are expressed. We are really trying to express a range of views and ideas. But also, they came up with a lot of really practical ideas. And we're calling them ideas to spark action, which we hope that you will, and the board, that other staff and leaders throughout the system can also look to as we move forward in addressing them. So one of the things that started, um, we started the, the, the November fifteenth large dialogue group session with, was questions around what is the core purpose of public education? Because this is one of the things that we realized in the core dialogue group process, that there were divergent views on this. One of the things that became interesting is that although people had different emphasis, there was a lot of, um, agreement around an emerging understanding that we can summarize as the purpose of public schools is growing well-educated, skillful, purposeful people who are able to work with others and act as full citizens in the lives of their communities and in the changing global world. So in this sense, it's both a traditional understanding of schools providing robust academic education, as well as career and technical, and to nurturing the development of students' purpose, social skills, and ability to be curious and kind citizens. That was one of the phrases that was used. So both attention to the curriculum and to schools that encourage critical thinking, creativity, and connection. Furthermore, there was really widespread agreement that students learn best if they feel they are safe and that they are in a caring environment where their needs are taken seriously. Because they're talking about the whole being of the student. So then came a question about what were some of the strengths and challenges that Rockingham County Public Schools are facing and fulfilling this purpose? And once again, I think you'll hear some of the echoes with the superintendent's search findings. People were really strong in expressing the view that Rockingham County itself is a tremendous asset. It's a beautiful and safe space where community and service are core values, stemming from a long tradition of looking after our neighbors in times of need. The priority of care and service extends to looking out for all children and translates into community support for schools. They specifically saw that the greatest strengths of the school system is the quality experience, dedication, and kindness of teachers, staff, and administrators, many of whom have served a long time and have deep roots in the county. Once again, what we heard before. However, people were very concerned that these strengths are being eroded by political divisions and polarization that are spreading, fear eroding trust and respect and the ability to seek common ground. They were concerned that this is specifically harming school personnel who may feel increasingly scared, attacked, disrespected, and stifled. The trust gap and community suspicion has felt to be constraining what teachers and other school personnel feel that they can do, especially to help students who are struggling with non-academic issues. Participants worried that the pressure is increasingly unsustainable and risks undermining what participants considered to be the greatest resource, the quality of teachers. So there are three main areas of suggestions to address this. And once again, the report goes into details. In general, increasing the transparency and community education about school policies, processes, and programs. Addressing the contentious dynamics at school board meetings. Including considering alternative formats for public comment that enable discussion and dialogue. And some said using communication agreements, like the kind that we've been using in our dialogue processes. Also, increasing, and this was a consistent theme, increasing opportunities for families to get back into schools and strengthen relationships. And this can be through fun activities, through volunteering, and also school-based dialogues for addressing challenging issues that specific school communities may be facing. Another aspect that was addressed, um, is a recognition about the diversifying population. Um, and really seeing that, first off, this is a tremendous asset and strength for Rockingham County Public Schools. Learning in a more diverse community helps everyone to be better prepared and able to thrive in a diverse world. And yet, there is also recognition that can present challenges. For those who are newer to the county, those who come from demographically and culturally different backgrounds, and especially those from historically marginalized groups, can face barriers to inclusion in the community and to schools. And so Rockingham County Public Schools needs to be better able to ensure it's responding to these diverse needs through its teaching, personnel, curriculum, and support services. Especially in our meeting in January, there was a lot of focus on the role of Rockingham County Public Schools in the personal lives of its students. And there was a focus really that came very strongly to the fore about how to address the basic human needs of children so they can thrive, both as learners and in their lives. In widespread agreement that students should have access to the safety nets that they need. Schools can be a vital part of an overall system of safety nets to ensure that every child is protected and cared for. And yet also recognition it's not the only source. And this is where the phrase, no individual can solve the problems that we face. However, the community as a whole has everything it needs to address these challenges. So participants felt that there should be some focus on collaborating for how to get these safety nets in place. And that these nets need to be pragmatic, attuned to the specific needs of specific child and their families, rather than ideologically driven. There is recognition that in some cases, families are under severe stress, which makes it hard for them to support their children's needs. However, unmet needs in the family system, whether they're economic, mental health, behavioral, will affect the mental and behavioral well-being of students. So the challenge is both to provide a sanctuary for students during school time and to connect families with the resources and supports that may best support them. As the core dialogue group had previously discovered, public schools can be the heart of the public. So participants developed many ideas about how schools can become a place where families, as a whole, can learn about the supports available to them. There is a sense of a need to continually, uh, okay, I'm going to move into the next part because there was also within this a focus on supporting the behavioral and mental health needs of students, which once again, we saw in the last one, is a really rising challenge. And there was recognition that this is an escalating challenge. And participants widely affirmed the value of R C P S, both playing a role in meeting these needs, and applauded R C P S tiered system of support that's aimed at meeting them at every level, and advocated for, um, both more resources available for this and also more awareness of the system so as to better connect students and families with those supports. Most participants believe that student, that families have primary responsibility. R C P S's role is to support and align to meet students' needs in a way that can support strong, healthy relationships between students and caregivers, recognizing that families are the most critical relationship in their child's life. At the same time, support strategies must adapt to situations at home, given that each family is unique. In all, they recommended a collaborative approach. Developing responses should be involve many key people and services. The approach, however, needs to begin with the assumption of good intentions and that everybody has the well-being of the child as a priority. Each person should be treated with dignity and respect as a part of this process of developing collaborative strategies. And in the wake of COVID, there is recognition that teachers have found themselves responding to these increasingly complex and challenging needs. And these behavioral and mental health needs have been especially taxing. There was widespread agreement, therefore, in the need for more specialists in schools to help meet these needs. And to, as one put it, free teachers with other professionals. This could help with retention and reduce turnover, particularly since teacher's stress is causing long-term teachers to leave the profession or retire. Furthermore, teachers do not necessarily have the capacity or skill set to manage some of these issues and need to be able to hand off to specialists in the schools who have the training and capacity. One of the focus points was around navigating the boundary between students and their families. And a particular challenge is how should school personnel respond when students' behaviors and views and might not be well-understood or accepted by their parents or guardians? And the students request privacy. This can apply in many different kinds of situations, ranging from a student's career aspirations or friendship group to an unwanted pregnancy or changed gender identity. School personnel can find themselves in a really difficult position, and their course of action is not always clear and straightforward. So we had recognized that schools' response to students' gender identity has been controversial in these school board meetings. But dialogue participants sought to identify general principles that can apply across the many different types of situations that schools may, personnel may find themselves in order to guide the role of schools, even as they, as participants in this process, continued to hold different views. First, they advocated that Rockingham County Public Schools needs to address situations on a case-by-case basis. It's the needs of the individual child, not ideology, that come to the forefront. They pointed to a very important, yet fine line between supporting students who want, um, or who are living, who want to have their autonomy in affirming their decisions. While support is part of an overall duty care and concern for students' health and well-being, affirming can sometimes imply, um, endorsement of the behavior. As students get older and mature, their privacy and autonomy can be increasingly recognized in age-appropriate ways. The way you respond to a sixth grader is going to be different than to a senior in high school. In general, there was advocacy of a yes-and approach that families must be engaged and protection measures must be in place for students if their safety is at risk. There is agreement that safety of students is the paramount value. Yet how best to ensure safety can sometimes be more challenging. Most agree that schools should immediately reach out to parents or to the safest adult in a child's life when a student appears to be at major risk, such as for suicide, self-harm, or intimate partner abuse. If the child is not in urgent danger, then immediate communication with parents and guardians may not be as necessary. R C P S should aim to help students themselves have the hard conversation with their families with the phrase, if safety is present, support bravery. And in general, feeling that R C P S can help support students' capacity to talk with their parents and guardians about difficult things generally. And that even if needed, it can support students and families in those conversations, even including facilitating those discussions. However, more counselors and support staff would be needed to meet that need. So in conclusion, I think all of these points and many more can be found in the report on the R C P S Community Dialogue Initiative page, along with these specific ideas for how to address it. But I think you can see from this report that we were able to have eighty-plus people from a wide range of backgrounds and orientations come together in really thoughtful dialogue, able to explore extremely challenging and often contentious issues. They have done so with civility and care. I hope you will take from this a sign of hope for what you already know, that this community loves its children and wants the best for them and is willing to work together to meet their needs. Because it indeed takes a community to raise children. So now, we're wanting to talk about the, the culminative phase of this process, at least for now. And, um, where we're going to be inviting really anyone in the public with a strong connection with Rockingham County Public Schools to take part exploring this general question of how best to create a safe and caring environment for all R C P S students. And, um, I'd like to hand over now to Katie LaPera, Coordinator of Community Outreach and Recruitment. He'll talk about the logistics for that.
Well, thank you. Um, we're really excited. This is going to be the, um, final, um, official gathering for our group, which will be open to the public. Um, we just asked that, um, the participants have a connection to Rockingham County Public Schools. And so if you go to our website, rcpss.net, on the announcement side, you'll see a little link to this. And registration is now open. There's no fee to register, but we will be capping it at a hundred fifty participants. And so, um, that'll be open, um, if you, if this is, um, an interest of anybody who's listening and want to be part of the next process, we'd love to have you be part of our conversations. Thank you.
Thank you all. Board members, do you have any questions?
I, I actually have one, Katie. Will there just be the one, uh, community event?
Where will it be located?
I, I think, um, I'm sorry. It maybe can just add into that, I think there was always the vision that this could be a model that could be used for others if the, if the, if, if the Rockingham County Public Schools wanted to continue that this model. I think one of the things through the large group dialogue process, I think that was our proof of concept. It can work. And as I think I said last time to you, if it works for eighty, it should work for a hundred and fifty, could work for three hundred and fifty. So this is, so this model could be used again in the future.
So we only have one planned. And, and moving forward, we might do additional ones.
Correct.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Katie, where, where will it be held?
This will be at E M U, um, at the Martin Chapel. And it says, it's listed, it's at from five thirty to eight forty-five P M. More questions? Stick around.
Thank you, guys, and thank you, um, if the, the Community Dialogue Group representatives that are here tonight. Can you guys please stand so we can give you a round of applause for all of your work?
Renee. Thank you very much. Definitely, I think we had two reports tonight that indicated, um, that things have gotten a little contentious, and we want to reel them back in. And we want to get back to civility, and we want to get back to respect. And I think we're on the right track, so thank you all for all of your work. I'm going to now turn it over to Dr. Aldfer for our, um, continuous school improvement process.
Members of the board, um, I believe it's been a while since we've, uh, shared with board members about the process that we use when we're, um, working through a school improvement and whether that's a, a school that has been identified as needing improvement by the Department of Education, or just generally all of our schools, the process that we go through annually to be sure that we're, um, doing the best that we possibly can for students. So I want to share, um, a brief presentation with you about, uh, that process that, that we have in place. Um, as you can imagine and likely know, there is, uh, Virginia Code that, um, requires that all schools, um, in every school division has a continuous school improvement plan that is based on a comprehensive needs assessment. So each year, every school is expected to, uh, take a look at what they're doing well, what they're, uh, could improve on, and then create a plan that they're going to try to, uh, work at enhancing their strengths and also, um, addressing areas that they may, um, had difficulty with. Um, this is a model that you'll see, um, that the, uh, Department of Education, specifically the Office of School Quality, has provided to school divisions as a, uh, a model for how we would work through this. You see there, the fundamental questions, uh, what are we trying to accomplish? And what changes can result in improvement? changes can result in improvement and how will we know the change is an improvement? And so each year, there is a comprehensive needs assessment that is done by school divisions or by schools. Essentially, they're going to be taking a look at various information, which I'll share in a in a few minutes, to see kind of what are the strengths and the weaknesses of the school division. And then they take that information, they will then create a school improvement plan that will then be reviewed at a later time. And then at the end of the year, we take a look at data to see if we've accomplished the goals that we had set for each other, for ourselves. So in the comprehensive needs assessment, there's essentially four areas that are being reviewed. There is in your executive content, there are the all of the school improvement plans that you can take a look at if you would would like to do that to see the specifics of what schools are looking at. And you'll see in each of those, there is the first several pages do constitute the comprehensive needs assessment, which basically breaks down the demographics, student outcomes are typically assessment and reading data, school processes, which are the instructional program, other assessments, grading, those types of things, and then perception data. So feedback from students, from teachers, from community members, parents, we take all that into account as they're reviewing the comprehensive needs assessment. Then the the comprehensive, excuse me, the Continuous School Improvement Plan is created by a team of people in the school, typically administrators and teachers. And there'll be two different strands in each of the Continuous School Improvement Plans. One is for teaching and learning, so this would be an academic goal, at least one academic goal that they'll be focusing on. And then there's also a strand on school improvement, or excuse me, school environment and improving the school environment. So I have a few examples of some of the goals that you may see in these plans. From Coburn Elementary School, it says all students will show at least one year's growth in their reading ability as measured by letters past PALS and Acadients. Other reading assessments will be used as needed, so that would be from their Continuous School Improvement Plan. John C. Myers wrote, "By the end of the 2022-23 school year, students in grades three through five will show improvement in the number sense through basic fact fluency as measured by informal informal assessments." And an example from Spotswood High School, throughout the 22 and 23 school year, Spotswood High School will utilize the Blazer Success Program and additional SHS programs to assist Tier Two and Tier Three students with a focus on academic growth and school attendance. For school improvement, some example goals from River Bend, during the 22-23 school year, River Bend will implement conscious discipline through monthly school-led professional development opportunities developed and led by conscious the Conscious Discipline Committee. Montevideo Middle School wrote, "Building capacity in our new interdisciplinary teams in grade six and seven." And from Turner Ashby High School, "Analysis of student data will show a decrease in the number of overall student tardies to school and the number of students accumulating 20 or more tardies to school." So again, those are just some examples. And again, you have access to all of the Continuous School Improvement Plans. So this is coming back to this particular diagram. So how is this then the study and the act, those pieces of this? So throughout the year, there is the school leadership teams will review this data. I meet with each of the principals multiple times throughout the year and we review where the what the data looks like, whether they're making strides toward meeting their goals. And then at the end of the year, we have, again, through whether it be SOL tests or other data that they're collecting, that information is provided in their Continuous School Improvement Plan and that is reviewed by me and other central office staff. And then we will be giving feedback to teachers or to principals at the end of the year related to whether they met their goals that they had set for themselves. So that's for all school division, all schools in our division. We also have a school improvement process. So there are times whenever we have schools that based on the standards of learning have not met certain criteria and are in need of improvement. And those are broken down by school quality indicators. So every school, there's a degree in which they're need to meet for academic achievement in English, math, and science. So this is the overall scores that the entire student body has received on those three assessments. And then there's also a breakdown by in English and math by certain groups, which I'll be sharing with you in just a minute. And then there's also the chronic absenteeism for students who are missing 10% or more days. So there's a percentage of those students that is being being calculated. As I mentioned about the achievement gaps in English and in math, these groups are the groups that are identified individually and we see how students are scoring in those individual groups. So if there's students are struggling in some of those groups, then we pay potential particular attention to those students in those groups to be sure that they're meeting the levels of achievement that we would expect. We have eight schools that were designated as in need of improvement. You can see there from the list that science was an issue. This was not unique to Rockingham County. The science assessments, particularly at elementary school, had changed recently. So catching up and getting adjusted to those has been a challenge for us as well as other elementary schools in the state. So we weren't surprised by that, but it is something that we are working at very diligently to try to address. So you can see there the list in alphabetical order, again, seven schools that were had issues related to science and then J. Frank Hilliard Middle School had was in need of improvement in English. Those schools needed to perform an academic review. So this is a team of teachers and administrators that are utilizing some tools provided to them by the Virginia Department of Education to take a deeper dive into their data, into the information in their in their schools. So two particular tools that were required, one on instructional leadership. So schools, and again, this was administrators and teachers and central office administrators as well, looked at local assessments, teacher goals, professional development materials, again, academic instructional materials that teachers are using to determine if there's any changes or adjustments that should be made in those areas. Additionally, they looked through lesson plans of teachers in the areas that were in need, so science for the elementary schools and English at J. Frank Hilliard, as well as classroom observations in those subjects that were reviewed. So those were all put together. It's quite a process, takes several hours, in some cases even broken over over a couple of days to to break down that information and then to put together some essential actions. So lastly, this academic review report. So school administrators needed to complete a report of this, which is provided to us. The format is provided by the DOE to essentially summarize the information. There are some essential actions that are put into place that will be taken that need to to improve performance. And it's particularly why I waited until now to share the our reports, the the Continuous School Improvement Plans with you because we didn't just do those now, right? So they're due in October, but it's wasn't possible. We didn't actually get the information about the academic reviews until into November. So we had already completed our our school improvement plans and then we did the academic reviews. And then based on that information, then adjustments were made to our Continuous School Improvement Plan. So those have just now been in January, we we sent those to the to DOE. But we've been working on this the whole fall, so there were just additions that were added to that. The school's Continuous School Improvement Plan is updated, as I mentioned, and the copy of the academic review and the updated CSIP is sent to the BDOE for review. And then in April, I'll be meeting with each of the principals and a representative from the DOE to review the progress and take a look at how they are working and how their efforts they're putting into to their Continuous School Improvement Plan. So as you can see, in summary, we have a plan that we put into place for all schools. We've done this for consistently over the years, but wanted to give you a sense of what that looks like for all of our schools. And then if a school does fall into a need for improvement, then we have another kind of advanced process we go through to to dig in to be sure that we're helping those schools the best we can. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Aldifer. Do we have any questions, board members?
I do have just one, just for clarification. So the standards are set forth by the DOE, not by our division.
That's right.
Because I know that the absenteeism is a little bit tricky because our administrators and teachers don't really have a lot of control over that, but.
So yes, I'll say this too about the chronic absenteeism. So this past year, that was not one of while it was listed and they gave us, they shared with us what our statistics were in that area, no schools were put in or in improvement for chronic absenteeism, even though some of our schools would have, but they just didn't count it for this year, for last year because of COVID and some of those things. That now for this year, 2022-23, we are responsible or kind of expected to meet those the thresholds for that. So there are, we've been working on on absenteeism all year in our schools, even though we weren't necessarily in improvement for that. But it is a a challenge for all of our schools, right? Absenteeism has been has been an issue. Again, that's not unique to Rockingham County Public Schools. That's been an experience for our neighbors as well.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the school calendar. I believe Dr. Shiflett is going to present.
There we go. It's better. Thank you, Chair Lord, members of the board, Dr. Aldifer. I'm sharing a draft of the 23-24 school calendar for information this evening. You will notice the draft calendar has 175 instructional days and 23 days dedicated for teacher workdays, parent conferences, professional development, and collaboration. I want to talk with you a little bit about the process as to how we got to this calendar and also just kind of remind ourselves that as we're creating a school calendar, the needs of our elementary school students vary from the needs of our middle school and high school students. So it's a little bit challenging sometimes to take all that in consideration. So we started working on the draft in December and basically we just took this school year's calendar and moved it into the upcoming school year. You got to adjust some dates, 2024 is leap year, by the way, so February has an extra day in the calendar. And then in December, we shared this first draft with our principals, assistant principals, our instructional staff during our regularly scheduled meetings in December and said, here it is, take a look at it, let's get some feedback. And so we started the process and we began working on it. We made some revisions based on those conversations. I also then reached out to Harrisonburg City Public Schools to talk to them about their school calendar, trying to align with them as much as we can because we share Mass Nutt Technical Center. So we try to get as close as we can, but it's never really perfect. Then in January, we did ask the principals then to share the draft with their faculty and staff and parent groups and to solicit feedback from those folks so we could, you know, see what what else we could uncover. And so our principals worked on that and then they brought that information back to us again late January, February meetings. Now, in your folders, you will also find a different calendar that I shared with you. And this that calendar is a little simple in some ways, but it just says calendar all feedback. And what I did is I took the liberty to take everyone's feedback and create a calendar based on what everyone wants. And so it's quite interesting if you look at this. So if someone says, well, they didn't listen to us, well, we just can't listen to everyone. This particular calendar, if we would, if you choose to want to use this one, has 185 designated or encumbered days. So our teachers typically have a 200-day contract. This would have 185 encumbered days, only 162 instructional days. So we would be missing 13 days less of instruction this year, but there would be some workdays. You notice in that there's a full week off at Thanksgiving, several weeks off at around the winter holidays and we get out to end of May. So that that would be a look at a calendar if we just said, we'll do what everybody would like us to do, right? So we have to take all the different feedback we get from different groups and try to make sense of it and put together a calendar that makes sense for students and their learning, but also recognizes teachers and the work that they need to do outside the classroom. And as you may recall, last year was probably one of our more significant transitions in the calendar. We went from 183 days of instruction. Three of those were snow days and we moved to 175 days and we repurposed those days for collaboration for teachers. And we tried to space those out throughout the year so students would have frequent breaks, but not these long stretches without a break. And so that's kind of how we ended up with the draft that's in front of you. And again, it is a draft and I would like to come back to the board at our next meeting and look to get this calendar approved or approve it with what suggestions you may have. Any questions?
Wait, which one are you coming back with? This this one or that one? That one?
Sorry, the real one.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's up to you if you want to do the other one. That's that would be kind of bold.
Well, I did notice on on this one that we had, you know, a Thursday start, which is what I always ask for. And I have to admit that I felt some pain that our previous speaker, our speaker, our public comment speaker had as a mother. There have been a couple of times this year, I'm like, what what Daffy School Board did that? So if we could, and I looked at this calendar and I like the new calendar much better because one time I looked at, I'm like, we gave you the Friday before Super Bowl off? That was not smart, but now we have Monday after Super Bowl off, so.
And so I wasn't going to point that out, but now that you have, yes.
I think that's really, that's in the right direction.
That actually came from one of our first meetings with our principals and also some parents said emailed and made that suggestion. So so we do listen to people, right? We take feedback and we say, okay, what can we do to put together a calendar? But we're just not at a place where we can listen to all the suggestions, right? It's just impossible.
But I did notice that we have Super Bowl Monday off, Easter Monday off, and even it works out really well. I heard from the Ag folks last year and coming back from national convention and having to go right back to school was tough. Well, they've moved national convention. So now we come back from national convention and we have the two days off at at the election day. So I really commend you guys for working hard.
That was just coincidental, by the way. I'm just, I'm not going to take credit for something I had nothing to do with.
But but I understand that there's a lot of hard work that goes into this. If you could take one look at it and see if we're close on any holidays, you know, like if there's if we take off Friday and then Monday is.
President's Day.
Yeah. I would appreciate that. Does any other school board members have any?
I would just like to comment to thank Dr. Shiflett in the process they went through. I worked with the principals and we we ran this through the principal meetings. So again, the principals went back and got feedback and we we talked a lot about this calendar, right? And there was a lot of feedback that was provided. We reviewed that. I don't want there to be any sense that any of this was ever rubber stamped, right? I mean, so we the the calendar, the a little tongue-in-cheek, right? That that Dr. Shiflett put together saying, this is what everything is. I just want to be sure that people do understand that we we do listen, right? And and try to do the best we possibly can, but it's not going to be possible that everybody gets the thing that they want, right? But it, this has been quite an extensive process, I'll just say. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you so much for all your work on it. I've lost my agenda. Okay, now we'll move on to the budget planning. Ms. Cheryl Mast.
Good evening, Chair Lord, Dr. Aldifer, and members of the board. This evening for your review, we will look at the House and Senate version of the budget. The House budget is very similar to the governor's budget, except it has a 7% raise in it instead of the 5% raise that the governor recommended. It also has the correction for the budget tool that we talked about last meeting where there was a correction that needed to be made. The Senate budget has about $5 million more in revenue. If you look at the spreadsheet that I laid out at your seat, I'll go over some of these changes. I'll go over some of these changes. This first section that you see there, that I titled that miscellaneous revenue, that revenue is the same across all, whether it's the governor's, House, Senate. And down the left-hand side, you can see the different categories. And we are not expecting much change next year compared to this year. You'll see it's only a $40,000 difference. This next slide represents our state funding. And if you'll just drop down there to the bottom line, just to point out there, the House has $7.4 million, and the state has an increase, the Senate, excuse me, increased budget of 12.6. So that's almost a $5 million swing that we're looking at. I'll point out a few of the main differences. Again, the House is the orange-colored area, and the Senate version is blue. Governor being purple that we looked at last time. If you'll look there at the basic aid line, the second one down, the House version is basically what the governor had with the Calc tool corrected. So that's what that change is. The Senate version, however, has about $3 million more. That $3 million represents what is called the support cap. In 2008, 2009, during that recession, there was a funding change on the amount of revenue we receive for our support personnel. There was a cap put on that, and that has never come back to state funding. The Senate is recommending putting that back, and that's about $3 million for Rockingham County. So that's part of, that's a large portion of our $5 million swing. If you'll drop down two more lines, you'll see the compensation supplement. Again, they're pretty similar in the House and Senate, but that difference from the governor is going from 5% to the 7%. And then if you drop down two more lines, in the governor's budget, he had what was called a retention bonus, and that was $449,000. Both the House and the Senate got rid of that. But the Senate turned around and put in what they called an SOQ bonus, and that's why you'll see that $1.2 million in the Senate version and not the House. Most of the other lines, except the ESL and at-risk lines, are almost identical in all three. So again, just to summarize, the real difference between governor and the House and the Senate is the House and the Senate correct the error that was made. The House follows then the governor's budget pretty closely, except it gives 7% raise. Senate gives the 7% raise and also has the support cap of $3 million in it. That then, that brings us to the bottom part of that sheet you have there, and that is our federal funds. And you'll see we're having a decrease in federal funds, but that decrease in federal funds is also happening on the revenue side. It is the S R fund, some people call it COVID relief funds. That is corresponding on the revenue. So it's not really, we don't really feel a loss for that. So then the bottom subtotal there, you can see the House version is 5.9 million increase with all miscellaneous state and federal, 5.9 versus $11 million. So as you know, the General Assembly did not pass a budget before adjourning. Therefore, we're unsure at this time what our state revenue for 2324 school year will be. We will be working, though, on different approaches over the next few weeks to try and create a budget within such wide parameters. In my 25 years of experience with the budget, I don't think I've ever seen the House and the Senate have a $5 million swing. There's always a difference, and we often, you know, come right in the middle, but we're talking 1,500, excuse me, 1.5 million difference versus 5 million. So we will see where that ends. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have about this right now.
Board members, any questions? Just keep us, keep us up to date as, as things progress.
And we'll work on some different approaches.
When are they supposed to come back?
I have not, I did not hear when they were coming back. I don't believe they said that, no. So we will.
We'll see.
We're going to have to figure out an approach to at least pass something, so we'll work on that. Well, thank you for all your work. You're welcome.
I mean, I don't think that we're expecting them to get back before we have to make decisions about it.
No, we are not. So we will have to make, we're going to have to make some assumptions, and we're working right now on what is the best way to approach this difference. And we're going to have to come with a budget and then say, we'll pass if it turns out to be different. And then we'll have a list of things we'll need to start putting back in. So, yeah.
Okay.
And that, I think, will come maybe June, hopefully, at least before July 1.
What fun. Just keeps, keeps things interesting. Thank you very much. Okay. Board, that concludes our information items for tonight. Now we'll move on to board members' comments and questions, and we'll start with Mr. Falk again. Thank you. Mr. Breeden?
Thank you, Chair Lord. As most of you know, and I've repeated a few times, I made it perfectly clear in 2019 that if reelected, this would be my final term on the school board and have not deviated from that. But I now, like others, find themselves, I've become part of the sandwich generation. I am still blessed to have both of my parents, both of whom are into their 80s. I have some grandchildren that range from two years of age up to 17. And there are health issues within my family, which are requiring my brother and I to sort of expedite the, the transfer of leadership of our family-owned business from second generation to third generation a little quicker than, than maybe we would have anticipated. So where I'm going with all of this is, is to announce that it is my intention to conclude my boardsmanship at the end of June of 2023 this year. That is, instead of going to December 31 of 2023, I'm, I'm ready, I'm ready to be granddad, and, and I need to be son. And if, if folks wonder why, and I'll say this, that, you know, that's my intention. It could change. It could be sooner, it could be a little after, depending upon events. Folks may wonder, well, why, why mention it now? And there are multiple reasons why I'd like to let it be known now. One is the superintendent search. I'd like for the applicants for the superintendency to know that, what, what my plans are. And I did not want to leave immediately after a new superintendent was hired and have that misinterpreted, that it was somehow connected to the, to the new superintendency. Also, it will give the board an opportunity to begin to familiarize themselves with the process of selecting an interim replacement from July through December. That's not been done in many, many years, as, as I recall. So it'll give them time to do that. And also, I wanted to go until June because I didn't want it to interfere in the election cycle. I did not want someone who plans to run to inadvertently be appointed to the board and, and therefore gain some sort of an advantage. And all candidates must have their paperwork filed by June sometime, I think. And so I've been extremely blessed to be, to have the citizens of McGaquesville and Elkton and some of Pinlaird and that whole district trust me for six different election cycles with their, with the care of their children's education. And so I just, I just wanted to lay that out there so that there was transparency in the process. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. And you caught me a little by surprise. But, so is this, this isn't your official, this is just your timeline for now?
That's correct. I, I don't, I don't envision that it will change. If there were a glitch in the superintendent's search that we needed to go beyond July 1, perhaps it might. If circumstances change within my family, obviously, that would, that would expedite things. But right now, that's the plan. And I will keep the board posted as we get closer so that the official resignation could be submitted, at least hopefully 30 days in advance of, of my leaving, so.
Thank you very much. I hate to see you go, but we need to take care of our families. And it's, you know, the, uh, nothing should be more important than your family. Even though we, at Rockingham County Schools, I like to think of us as a family, your, your biologicals need your attention. So thank you very much. Dr. McWhelkin?
This has been an evening of surprises. I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Breeden, and we respect, we, we respect your judgment, and, and thank you very much. Thank you for many levels.
Dr. Alfer?
I just wanted to comment regarding the, the question you had had, Ms. Hurst, about reading specialists. So that process about adjusting reading specialists and the staffing in each school has been in the works for about two years. Or last year and this year, as we've been kind of working through that. And there's sort of a, a system that we've been working through to do that. But I would encourage you to talk with Dr. Shiflett afterwards, and he can give you some more details about what that looked like. So I just wanted to be sure people understood that it wasn't, we were just kind of randomly pulling teachers out of classrooms or out of the positions of reading specialists, that there has to do with some numbers and making sure there's equity across school to the, uh, schools based on numbers and those types of things. So, but feel free to speak with Dr. Shiflett afterwards.
Thank you. Reading the room, I think I know the answer to this, but do we have any students present tonight? Yay, we, oh, wow. We have two students present. So thank you all for coming tonight. I hope you learned lots. I guess this pretty much concludes our question session and our information items. So now we'll move along to, we do have reason to move into closed session. Do I have a motion? To move into closed session?
I move that the board enter a closed meeting to discuss and consider the following pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1. Personnel, specific public officers, appointees, or employees for the purpose of considering such individuals' assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, salary, or resignation.
Thank you, Dr. McWhelkin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. We're unanimous. But right before we go into closed session, thank you all for attending. Please have safe travels home and have a wonderful week.